Beni Vice President Lizer here on May 6th COVID-19 Town Hall update. We do have some updates to give and some information. So appreciate you chiming in with us. And as we always do, open up in prayer. So let's open up in prayer. And then I'll introduce our President Jonathan Ness. Yeah, dear God, we thank you this day, beautiful day, Lord. As the seasons change, Lord Father, there's the promise of planting, of sowing. It has come upon us and to us, Lord. Father, we continue morning with the lost loved ones all across our land, among us, the Neta. Where the land that you set us on. So we thank you again. We provide for the people all across the land. We give you honor. Blessings on to conduct this meeting, to your wisdom. And we thank you, Lord. We ask again your safety, your well-being. But thank you. We give you this meeting this time, May 6th Town Hall update. Father, yeah, dear God, we give all the glory and praise. Jesus is sleeping. As I said earlier, we do have our President Jonathan Ness as well. So this is also the national. Welcome, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President. Hope you all can hear me. Are we okay? Thank you, Vice President, for the prayer. Dan ichen nallgidh o, da isn'ochsra ag iad e. Dan ichi di niidh o leith. Lei yucachicgaidh e deite. Co e oltcha niidh i gilhla niidh a. E co na dain dan leni gido. Kedh at i ni ginn dashna shu. Nicha do co ta neitche. Ota da leith o leith. Deidh e ya oltcha a jinn dalne shighi. Ota oltcha agi behenni. A coichin shi behenni. Deidh e kot a bahao a. So nichi kot o oltcha anothleni ghi. Kada oltcha achlini ghi. E ya cheh dan ghi di niidh o leith. Khalechin neidh o naanthin bechag a chann e dhaile. Chiu achlin e di binn deilch kirighi. Ota khalechin da oltcha. So cheh dan ghi di niidh o leith. Kot o yucachicgaidh o e deite. Do lei yailni do deidh e deidh cosentzragi na hast eitsa da. Na kien neza di do baat. Des di do baat. Hast ratzatah de mail yajje. Neilt a. E kot a e ya co ni gheen iinn e beda dole na. Do wah achlin it a ye. Tchadin ye. Atachlin tchadin do baat. Ashla neza di do baat. Ashla di neilt a. E co ni gheen iinn e. Tchadin de mail yajje do baat. Ashla neza di do baat. Ashla di neilt a. E co ni gheen iinn e. Cosentzragi beda dole na. Ich adaskre ghi. Yad e ndastle ghi. Deidh e na di nast e de mail yajje do baat. Na kien neza di do baat. Alsa neilt a. E co yad e ndastle do ich adaskre. Ado co ni gheen iinn e. Nichi zat da jutene ghi di. Bez a do nallni ghi. E alsa de mail yajje do baat. Na kien neza di do baat. Sebit di do baat. So e shi co ni gheen iinn e. Ba tsudilzendhodle. Chiu achlin e. Aalt chiu bechag i dastle. Ado co ichni cradh a lo. Ba da hanna. Conda hadainothne shigheenothlini. Nichi chit o. Nichi ze ghe dast. E co a tcha da do chha. E a di nichi behaz ani et e. La e a do ba da at se. La na da niitzinachachin. Enochlin. Ta shi a leidh isn'ochsra. She do shadotse. Da hanna ninde. Nicha ma. Nichi je. Nichi masa. Nichi cheninali. Khalechin ietsoklin. Inalikle ba da at. Ashla. E binin a la na. Nicha da niitzin. Khado tizze. Khachidetane. Ado zen. Nichi chidetan e. Na kien neza di do baat. Des di do baat. So neilt a de mail yajje. De mail yajje. Ni ghejagoliya. Bo ni gheen iinn e ba da at. Se ghi. E na kien neza di do baat. Na di do baat. Di de mail yajje. Neilt a. Ze. Ni gheen iinn e ba da at. Na kide. Khada at. Se ghi. E nast e di do baat. Nast e de mail yajje do baat. Na kien neza di do. Ashla di do baat. Di neilt a. E co ni gheen iinn e. Alsa na kie. Na kie ba da at. So e shi e. Nichi behazendhodle. Shigheenothlini. Arro deidh chepah o agi. E ya sebitzatah. Ndaistcha agi. Ndaist. Ndailltcha agi. Ya graduations ba naalde agi. E kot o zel indan leni gido. Nachan dalne shighi. Dailltcha agi. E kot a e ya sa dohan. Nichi chidu. Dei leith o leith. Nacha alne akho. Di high school agi. Ya sebi or na kie. Zatah. Da oltcha agi. Twelve grade. E de baat. Ed o leith. Lei o deshi. Chiu lei jollie endan. Na o ya lei oltcha ndaznelo. A e de baat. Ed o leith. Da di no. Ota chiu bannalni ghi binin a. Ado hotat da oltcha agi. E do dei bad o leith. Lei sebi. Da oltcha agi. Ya eighth grade agi. E do baat. Ed head start o do baat. E shi e di binn deilch kirighi. Be ghe. Ota da leith o leith. E binin a. Chiu jo go. E ya hotat na hat. Ado naanthin. Kot o deile. Shigheenothlini. Saghachan de. Akho. E o nich behazendhodle. Chiu achlin Dr. Jill Jim. Ghechag a chann eileth o leith. So ado o cheh dan ghi di niidh o leith. Shigheenothlini. Ashi sotsokujidh dene gheche. Nichi chia na nasti o leith. Bilaganag gheche shi o leith. So bi bilaganag gheche ba da chwilnegi. Ashhona ni ghi ka na chia. Kot o nich masa. Nichi cheninali. Bechag a chann e dhaile. Aha danna. Alsa dene gheche do bilaganag gheche yajiltio. Conda la na nish. Co hanan. Nichi chidu. Dei legi. Binan nish la go. E binin a. Atsghalo deit. Shigheenothlini. Kot o hanam. Nichi chand de.
You know, good. Good morning to everybody. Just a quick overview of what's been happening here on the Navajo Nation in terms of COVID-19 and the work that our healthcare professionals are doing. I'm here in Yucachicke, Arizona, where a new school is being built right behind us. What a beautiful backdrop of the Chuska Mountains. And, you know, we want to also acknowledge the teachers throughout the Navajo Nation and all across the country and all over the world. You know, it's Teacher Appreciation Day nationally, Teacher Appreciation Week. And we want to say thank you to each and every one of you. You know, it's been a challenging year because of the pandemic. You have done an extraordinary job in teaching through Facebook, Zoom. You know, there's social media and keeping our students up to speed on their academics. We want to say thank you to each and every one of you, teachers and faculty and staff. Graduation season is behind us. Today we'll talk about graduation protocol. Dr. Jill Jim has the graduation guidelines. And I just want to say on the graduation guidelines, it's going to only be for high school graduation in person. I know not everybody's going to be happy about these guidelines, but we just ask for your patience and your understanding because we're in a pandemic. A lot of graduates are asking us if they can have in-person graduations. And we did our very best to put a guideline together so that we can have a celebration of our graduates in person. Of course, you still have social media capability. These guidelines are only for high school graduations on the Navajo Nation and college graduations. And as you know, we only have two colleges here on the Navajo Nation. That's Intu and Dennet College. There'll be limits, but I'm sure the schools will be doing the online graduation as well so family members can still be a part of the celebration. But there'll be a limit of guests for the graduates. And just we ask that the schools follow the guidelines. Tomorrow, we are anticipating that the same presentation will be given to all the schools on the Navajo Nation so that they are aware and they can ask questions because it's going to be the school's responsibility if they decide to have an in-person graduation. And it's going to only be allowed outdoors as well. And I just again ask for your patience and your consideration on this. And we're not going to make everybody happy, but we just want to have, you know, a special day for our graduates. So today, up to today, since the pandemic has hit the nation over a year now, 30,550 people have caught the virus. 29,201 have recovered. We're getting updates every day on that. 1,282 of our Navajos citizens have died because of COVID-19. In 24 hours, the last 24 hours, there has been only seven positive cases. And for the last three days, we have had zero deaths here on the Navajo Nation. 247,165 vaccines shots have come to the Navajo Nation. 224,465 have been given. That's 90.8% of what we received have gone into the arms of our Navajo citizens. And you know, some of these, you have to have two doses. So 99,254 of our citizens have been fully vaccinated. That's two shots of Moderna, two shots of Pfizer, and about 4,000 plus of our people got Johnson &amp; Johnson. And no adverse reaction, negative reaction from taking J&amp;J, by the way, here on the Navajo Nation. We were in Chinley on Saturday. Over 50 people got vaccinated. I saw 16-year-olds getting the Pfizer, maybe in preparation for an in-person graduation. And so we just continue to encourage our Navajo citizens to get vaccinated. If you see, check on our full social media pages for a vaccination site near you. Our goal here is to get the Navajo Nation residents, all of us that live on the Navajo, to get to 75% fully vaccinated. Right now, we're about 71% of us that live here on Navajo. Everyone that utilizes the healthcare facilities on the Navajo Nation, that means people who live off the nation coming to get healthcare on the Navajo Nation, it's about 54% fully vaccinated. But if you just count the residents, it's about 71%. So I haven't get an update. This is as of 5/2, May 2nd. I haven't get a recent update on these vaccination summaries. But when we do, I'm sure we're going to be closer to that 75%. If we reach that goal, I think we are really open to beginning to reopen the Navajo Nation to our visitors just in time for tourism season. But that means we still got to be safe. If we're a vendor, we still got to wear our mask. You know, visitors come from all over the world. We want to keep everyone safe here on Navajo, our visitors and also our Navajo citizens. We gave out about 250 food boxes on Saturday in Chinley. Many folks didn't. They already had their vaccine, but they wanted the food box. We didn't. We weren't saying no. We opened that up and we were able to give about 250 food boxes and hygiene kits to our Navajo citizens there in Chinley. The other questions, there's some confusion about the Public Health Emergency Order, the recent one. We moved from orange status to yellow status. People are saying, what's open? People are saying, well, the restaurants are open. They're not following the protocol. You know, the new Public Health Emergency Order does allow in-person dining at the restaurants at 25% capacity. And that started last Monday. And last Friday, you know, some of us went to Quality Inn. We did have a good meal and it was good to get back into the restaurant. So and try to move towards some normal operations. But we're still doing it very carefully. That's why it's 25%. So Dr. Jim today will be giving an overview of the Public Health Emergency Order, the new one, and also the graduation guidelines. And this month, yesterday, we had the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Relatives Proclamation here on Navajo and all across the country, raising awareness of those that have missing family members here on Navajo. And it was a day of events, many events. So we want to just make sure that we also remember those missing people and their families and try to get some closure for them. If we can help, there's an FBI poster there, you know, information for those missing peoples would be helpful. Today is Nurses Appreciation Day for all the nurses everywhere and on the Navajo Nation. We appreciate the work that you have done throughout this pandemic, for everybody. Not just this pandemic, but for all our healthcare needs. Thank you. We appreciate the work that you have done throughout this pandemic. Teacher Appreciation Week this week, teachers. We appreciate the work that you have done. It's been challenging because of the pandemic, but you continue to teach our young people throughout these virtual and online sessions. We were Correctional Officers Appreciation Week. We appreciate our correctional officers as well. Thank you for your hard work. I know that you are on a daily basis confronted with some of this virus, especially with those that don't listen or they may cross the line a little. We appreciate the work that you do to care for those individuals. Foster Care Awareness Month is here too. We encourage, you know, Navajo people to adopt Navajo children. If we don't have any parents here on Navajo, what happens is a next tribe can adopt Navajo. We want to try to keep our Navajo young people here on the nation. We don't want them to go other places. So there's a big need of foster parents here on the Navajo Nation. There's also Mental Health Awareness Month. You know, we've gone through some difficult times. If you need, you know, some support, reach out, you know? I know that there's some difficult times. People lost loved ones. Our pastures, our local pastures are available. Our traditional practitioners are available. If you need help with the information for them, contact our Department of Behavioral and Mental Health Services, please. It is also EMS appreciation. No, EMS appreciation is coming up, May 10th through the 15th. We'll be doing a proclamation. Thank you for the EMS, for the hard work that you all have been doing throughout this pandemic, being on the front lines, being our warriors and lady warriors, and helping our citizens through their difficult times, especially when it comes to an emergency at home and getting them to the hospital or the clinic. Friday, May 14th is Navajo Nation Police Officers Day. There'll be a lot of events. Of course, our police officers 24/7 out there in our communities keeping us safe. There's only 200, a little bit over 200 Navajo police officers throughout the Navajo Nation. So we really need to also be responsible as leaders in our communities and leaders in our households too, that, you know, let's not be quick to call the cops. If cops, police officers, if we can handle the situation ourselves.
Jo ni gheen iinn e. Yailtio. Edo jo da do tles ote. So e dey hotat. Hanan. Nichi chidu. Deile. Arro Sunday. So here's a friendly reminder to everybody. What's Sunday? Some of you are probably scratching your head. Oh, it's not Sunday. Sunday's Mother's Day, guys and gals. Let's do something special for our moms. You know, of course, you have to keep it within your pod at the homes and wear your masks still if you're having Mother's Day events, even when you're eating. You know, and try to do these outside. You know, it's a beautiful day today. You can still do events outside, you know? Just stay safe, fully vaccinated people. You know, I know CDC is saying you don't have to wear masks, but here on Navajo, let's continue to wear a mask. Let's keep each other safe and have a great, happy Mother's Day. All your mothers out there. Cheh. Ni ghekada do. I odo. Khada. Ya. Dan ghi jutanda. Anthin do. Ash kee jenna anthin da. Verhandat. So and I wanted to say a special thank you to my mother, Mabel Donald Ness. Mabel Ness, Mom, Happy Mother's Day. I know some of us that are on the front lines haven't seen our mothers and, you know, face to face in person for a very long time because we want to keep them safe. They may be in that vulnerable population category, still there. But you know what? Well, we're going to get through this. We're going to have Mother's Day again in person in the future. Let's continue to follow these protocols. So Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, grandmothers, aunties, sisters out there. Enjoy yourselves and maybe give them, you know, some flowers or a gift just to appreciate our mothers because they are the backbone of the Navajo Nation. Nicha ma. E ya naas. Siwad. Dan nin. Tinni ghi. E wat dat nin. So conso shi hanan. Nichi chuguisla da leith. I'll wrap it up there. Thank you so much. We're on our way to Rock Point to meet with the chapter officials on a road, on a route. And we'll be signing that legislation to improve a route that goes from Rock Point halfway to Rough Rock, I think it was. Was it Rough Rock? Yeah, Rough Rock, that back road, to get it gravelled. So that's where we're headed today. So God bless you. Take care of yourself. Continue to wear your mask, social distance. Wash your hands with soap and water. And if you need hand sanitizers, give us a call. 928-871-7000. If you need hand sanitizers, we can get it to you. We got a shipment of donations from Walmart and with the help of delegate Edmund Yazi and St. Bonaventure. You know, the fire department this past Sunday was handing those out. We do have some that we can give to you. Just send us, give us your address or something and we can send it out to you. We probably can't do the big boxes, but individual sizes, we can send that out. And if you can pick it up at the office, just give us a call. 928-871-7000. God bless you. Take care of yourself. I'll turn the time over to our Vice President, who has been doing an outstanding job in terms of getting all the information together and compile for the economic recovery efforts here on Navajo. You know, our businesses have been hit hard. Well, you know what? We'll be stronger because of it. And with the help of the Vice President and his team, we were able to see and probably see some good projects come out through this American Recovery Plan list. So thank you so much. Have a good day, everybody. Take care.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Appreciate your leadership, your updates there. Be safe out there in the Rock, Round Rock, Rough Rock area. It's a great thing to bring new highways, new changes and development to.
Uh, it's a great thing to bring new highways, new uh changes and development to. Mention would allow most middle and high school students to get vaccinated before summer camps. Um, and will start at the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, but uh still continued hundred and twelve million vaccine doses have been shipped to states, pharmacies and clinics all across the United States and fifty-six percent uh close, close Arizona update. Hundred and six Arizona largely. Patchy County, eleven thousand three hundred forty-two with four new cases. So it looks like we're up uh four from the last update. Navo County, sixteen thousand two hundred and forty-one with eleven new cases. So we're still s- showing some, some movement there. Coquenino County, uh seventeen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight with ten new cases to report. New Mexico. County map show majority of New Mexico is in thousand seven hundred and eighty-one total cases this whole year. San Juan County, fourteen thousand seven hundred and three with forty new cases. So we need to continue to be safe and advocate for masking up, social distancing, limiting travel to these areas that are showing still uh some seemingly high numbers. Gal McKinley County, twelve thousand two hundred and forty-four with one new case to report. Utah, Utah no longer has any COVID nineteen restrictions on businesses or residents except for schools. So uh continue to be safe there. And also, the Utah Department of Health on Tuesday issued a new public health order. As the new law allowed to con- uh to continue to require basic masks in schools and routine testing of students sports and other extracurricular uh ninety thousand nine hundred hundred and seventy-nine total total cases this past year with two hundred and twenty-eight total cases Utah statewide. San Juan County there in southeastern Utah, one thousand thousand eight hundred ninety-six. Looks like the numbers in the same. And the Utah Navajo Health System is reporting uh total positive cases, one thousand and ninety-four. So those are my updates here. Uh, I bring up Dr. Jill Jim here shortly, but uh as President said, today is uh the National Nurses, uh we care, so we appreciate our nurses. We've always said we do, our health professionals, our first responders in the, certainly this pandemic. So uh no person many so shout out from VP and by, and President to you all. Appreciate your leadership. We appreciate your sacrifices and dedication. So we also uh, I want you to know that today is National Day of Prayer. So I I apologize for
Hey, well, good morning, everyone. We'll see if Vice President joins us and if he does, I'll be fine. If he'll continue. So he might come in and out. Vice President, you're going in and out. This is Dr. Jim.
The just wanting you all to know is National Day of Prayer. Uh, I was blessed to read this morning. Uh, it says, "In the morning, prayer is the key that opens up God's mercies and, and in the evening, it is the key that shuts us." All right, go ahead.
Well, I'll go ahead and continue in case Vice President does come back. Um, we're hearing you, but we um didn't hear mostly your presentation. Until you get your signal situated, maybe we'll go ahead and have you come join me again afterwards or during the presentation. Just let me know when you have a good signal. That'll be great. Well, good morning, everyone. I, I want to just thank all the listeners.
Did they not hear the whole thing?
For Navajo Department of Health. And so I want to just ask the listeners, thank you for joining us again. Um, I mean, go ahead and talk about two things that President Nez mentioned. Um, that is just to inform the public about the public health emergency orders and also the um graduation guidelines. So I'll go ahead and start my presentation here in regards to um the information. So let me go ahead and just share this. So I'll start with this one here. Um, they're just a um general guideline. Always like to just remind everyone anyone about wearing a mask, maintaining social distancing, washing your hands and cleaning um high-touch surface areas. So um I couldn't see what our so don't hit the door. So I'll transition to English mainly. Um, as a reminder, we are in the yellow reopening status and there are two public health orders that were um adjusted or updated. That is nine and ten. So ten is the latest one. So on number nine, we're in the yellow status, meaning that we're operating at fifty percent. So what you'll see here is just that um there's some confusion, I guess, out there in the public about some of this. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. That the yellow status basically means fifty percent maximum occupancy allowed for most businesses and and sometimes if a business is not identified in there, it's most often included. Um, so we get questions about lodging and the zoo, and so they are open. Um, I believe the zoo is at twenty-five percent though. Um, so I have to clarify that. The restaurants and dining facilities, they're still permitted to do drive-through and curbside. Also, um restaurants and permanent outdoor can operate at fifty percent if they have a permanent dining area. But if they don't and they want to put tables outside, they can only do um up to outdoor um temporary tables. They can um allow four persons per table. Um, personal care and services um are allowed by appointment only, like I indicated. Lodging can be at um fifty percent, but not the zoo. The zoo will be at twenty-five percent with the museum. So museums are open at twenty-five percent and also um the casino and video poker, any of the Navajo casinos except for blowing water, I think is still at fifty percent. Um, and no visitors and tourists allowed because the um legislative law to allow visitors and tourists is not, um is still in effect. So we still are um adhering to those, to that particular law. And that also goes for the restaurants may provide indoor dining at twenty-five percent. So there should be um twenty-five percent of maximum occupancy um for indoor dining is not allowed. And then marinas and parks are allowed at twenty-five percent. And just to follow the um same recommendations for casinos that no visitors and tourists are allowed. Also, tour businesses must follow the X C O C guidelines for tour businesses. So there was a guidance that was issued. And then museums and zoo are open at twenty-five percent. Um, what items that we're considering and are under review in the yellow status are flea markets. So they're not allowed right now, but they're up for discussion. Flea markets, roadside markets and youth programs, outdoor youth programs. Um, so the X C O C is evaluating these right now. So we'll issue out um new guidance. Um, and also an updated or amended public health order when these are um available for reopening after assessing um the risk and the continued um progress in the yellow status. Clearly not allowed in yellow status are gyms, recreation facilities and movie theaters. Um, other the safety discussions that we're having internally with the Health Command. Safety team is transit, um walks, runs, um some are doing motorcycle rides or visitor, allowing visitors and tourists. So those are just some items for discussions and also meetings. I mean, meetings um for uh large meetings or, or medium-sized meetings or governmental meetings with large gatherings. Those are just something that we're discussing right now. So um all the protocols around any sort of small group meetings in conference rooms at your work are fine, but if there are um conferences or things that are being planned right now, those um should not be considered just because we don't have any guidance and we're not ready to um support that sort of function because universally, um there's still um um guidelines around avoiding lo- medium to large size gatherings. So just reconsider that. Um, Public Health Order number ten is um is reiterating that wearing a mask in public is mandatory. Um, daily curfews remain from eleven PM to five AM in the morning. Gathering of fifteen or fewer is permitted. Traditional ceremonies of fifteen or fewer are permitted. Fifty percent of the occupancy for churches is allowed or if um there, and also is dependent on our allowed space and in a closed space. So if you can't physically or socially distanced within a physical church setting, um you should go with the lower amount. So ensuring that there are on fifty percent um occupancy and possibly less. There are limited driving gatherings up to fifty vehicles that are allowed and also graduations and Public Health Order number ten looked at the um additional guidance is forthcoming. So that was completed. So I'll be going into, kind of going over the safety guidelines for graduates and just want to thank all the graduates first. So let me pause my screen and pull up the graduation guidelines here. So these guidelines were very um um instrumental in putting um the information together by the various safety teams. And I think that was very helpful um in regards to um making safety measures for all the schools and participants. So um as I mentioned, that it is reflecting the Public Health Order number ten, that all schools are responsible for understanding and implementing the guidelines for preventing COVID nineteen transmission. So this is in relation to any kind of graduation or promotion event. I know there are ways to put this as um commencements and whatnot. So either one of those. So clearly, um schools should clearly communicate to students, parents and their families, the steps to be taken before, during and after graduation or promotion, so that everyone is aware of the protocols. We're encouraging individuals that are attending the outdoor um setting, that they're be partially or fully vaccinated. That making sure they're not under orders by a case manager, that they should be in isolation or quarantine um as well, or they're sick, or either they've been exposed to someone with COVID nineteen in the last two weeks. So all of the CDC guidelines on exposure are um addressed here as again. And also those that are awaiting test results should continue to um wait for their test results and should not attend the event if they don't receive a negative result in time. So if you're awaiting test results, it's not recommended to attend the event. We also just encourage individuals on their own that are attending the, the event. If you're not vaccinated, it might be good to get tested, um just in case, um twenty-four to forty-eight hours to prior to attending the event. So that would be my only um suggestion here with the team. Is just looking at ways to reduce, reduce the risk of um getting someone else sick. So that relates to, we know that vaccinations are one way, but then if you're exposed or should be under quarantine and you you are definitely going to be uh putting someone at a higher risk of getting COVID if you are sick. So that's why we encourage individuals to stay home if you meet any of these criteria. We're also encouraging individuals to get vaccinated. Also by attending, if you're attending an outdoor event, yes, um hopefully you are on, on the road to getting vaccinated. Also, it's important not only for the graduation, but you're also protecting other people at the event in the, in the community. Uh, there is a vaccine webpage um on the Navajo Department of Health COVID nineteen web, uh webpage section. Otherwise, you can always um call your nearest federal um I H S facility or tribal health organization um to get a vaccine. Um, right now, we understand that um vaccine access and getting an appointment shouldn't be an issue. Um, some of the basic guidelines around attending the graduation is just the three Ws. Continue to wear your mask, wash your hands. One thing that's on here is that mask will be mandatory, that all participants must wear a mask prior to entering the um any venue for the duration of the advance and while receiving diplomas. There also should be, um disposable mask must be provided or available for attendees. Hand sanitizer or hand washing stations must be provided. Convenient and accessible and also keeping um six feet distancing from others except for your own household pod or family pod. So those um recommendations are still um going to be highly encouraged that schools comply with to ensure safety of all individuals. And so um a lot of this is also our own responsibility. I think by now we've all learned to carry our own um maybe a clear ziploc bag of extra gloves, extra masks, uh handheld hand sanitizer. So if you have a little um kit that you have, um that you travel with, um that will be helpful. So that way um you can just keep that with you. But I think by this time, we all have learned how to carry I think by this time, we all have learned how to carry those um items with us to ensure that. If we need to protect ourselves, we have that accessible in our own person bag or whatnot, so. Also screening prior to the start of the event, that all attendees of an indoor. Or in-person outdoor event must pre-register to avoid onsite sign-in sheet, so. Um, we like to just keep documentations of individuals attending the event. And the best way to control this is to make sure that individuals pre-register. Um, as a way to, rather than having people sign in onsite, which you're then exchanging pens, pencils, and whatnot, so. All attendees must be self-screened, um, meaning that they'll have to answer questions, there's a self-checker on. CDC webpage as well that tells you um to quarantine or isolate or get tested kind of deal. Attendees can be screened for fever and COVID symptoms before attending the event, so that way. Um, we can identify individuals that might have a high fever, that's just the purpose, but. We understand that little kids, um. The screening options for that's quite different, um, so there'll be. Protocols you need to put in place in regards to make sure you capture and screen adults appropriately and also students. As well, and then in regards to food or drinks for graduates and their families. Um, there will be no food or drink will be allowed during the event except for a bottle of water. After the event, there can be to-go food um via drive-through at the separate location. And the food must be consumed at home or in the vehicle, so there shouldn't be any gathering around um. Any uh in the park or outside on the grass or in the bleachers eating food, there should be. Um, food that just are ready to go and um families can take it with them. And so the concession stands will be closed due to increased risk of transmission of COVID as well. So those will be in relation to the food and drinks. Hygiene and safety for onsite events, this could be the drive-in, drive-through, or car parade, or either. The in-person outdoor event. And that's basically to make sure there is enough cleaning time in between the processions. And that means um the school will probably have to clean um high-touch surface areas that. Um, people might touch such as rails or anything to move. Up and down the bleachers or items like that, so allowing two hours in between. Schools must keep records of all attendees for thirty days and to ensure that if there is an outbreak, that we have. Um, contact tracers with the correct informations and any seating charts that will be. Accompanying um if there needs to be an investigation. There also is discouraging of handshaking, elbow, and fist bumps and hugs should not occur between different household groups as well, just to make sure that. Um, individuals are um not making contact between different households, so. Um, that would be the um reduction of any transmission. And this includes any limited sharing or exchanging of materials, this could be diplomas or awards, but. Um, one way to overcome that is to have students have their diplomas in hand when they arrive. Also, if there are speeches that are being done, are either in the parking lot by administrators or either by. Um, the speakers that they clean and disinfect microphones after each use. And also, uh, physical distancing needs to be um. Also be um adhered to by school employees and must be stationed appropriately. To ensure compliance with all requirements and to limit congregating and congregation and crowding. So there shouldn't be like a three households that are congregating here at the graduation, so family pods. That are coming to the graduation would need to keep a a good distance away um from others and then. Um, some safety markers of seating could be done in order to avoid any sort of um. Risk, so, and that relates back to more of a. Um, what social distancing would look like, and so graduates are spaced six feet, six feet from other students and seated attendees. Diplomas are passed with no handshakes or physical contact, families that live in the same home may remain together. And as I mentioned, this is a new term that people will um, maybe will get used to, um, you're a family pod. Like if you have one to four guests that are coming, you stay together in your family pod. And then keeping six feet from other family pods. And then making sure, as I mentioned, to make sure seats are um already pre-marked or the distancing for families to sit. And plan arrival and departures to ensure spacing throughout. And consider separate entrances entrances and exits to the venue to allow one-way flow of attendees. Other ways to consider um safety or distancing is also presenters and speakers may remove their mask. If they are ten feet away from others, if some other. Meaning or chanting is planned, performers need to be staged at a a minimum of ten feet away from others while outdoors. There should be discouraged audience members from yelling and other practices that may increase the likelihood of transmission from droplets as well. So just making sure that there are reduced risk um within the graduation event. Um, then there also is the graduates may remove masks for professional photo. Um, my understanding is when we're already um. To grading and physical, they're already going to be distance apart, so. The um, the graduates can remove their mask if there's a photo um person that will be doing that, or if they have a designated area for photos. That would be great, so schools are encouraged to set up different and separate um photo. Areas for students after they receive their diploma. So there are two um li- risk levels for the graduation events, and there's low and moderate risk. And so right now, the low-risk graduation events are virtual and live streaming. Uh, which is no physical contact, um, drive-through or car parade, um, car parades. With no physical contact and support from local law enforcement. Also, drive-in gatherings, also, they have no physical contact, um, and there's only fifty vehicles permitted. The moderate risk is more around um the outdoor gathering, and that's where. We talked about the procession times, like to reduce gathering, so. Um, graduates can be organized on pods of twenty-five, but in our case, they can be organized in pods of fifty. And so um I might need to make that um correction, but there was the pods of fifty. Um, so there can be fifty students that can be graduated at um. At one time and staying within the hundred guests, so I'll look at that. If you can't fit all graduates in one day, you're encouraged to stagger these graduations over multiple days. So that you can safely celebrate um students from graduating. So that's where the the capacity limitations by event type are here. There are seniors and college students are only permitted for in-person outdoor. So fifty or less graduates at one single procession. And the staff are not to exceed forty staff, and also one to four guests per graduate. And also not to exceed um one, um, five guests, so there should be only a limit um on that as well. Not to exceed a hundred guests of graduates as well. So those are the um guidelines that we have, and I talked about the prepackaged food. Um, are allowed and provided at a separate location. Virtual, live streaming, drive-through, and car parade, or car parade are for kindergarten and up students, so kindergarten and up. So any grades um beyond kindergarten, there's no limit, but if you're doing a drive-through or a car parade. Um, there's only one vehicle per household, and if you're doing a drive-in, you're only limited to one vehicle per household. But there isn't a limit necessarily on um the number of attendees if they can do it safely. Of course, in-person, outdoor, or indoor is not allowed. Um, also, any head start promotion or graduation events are permitted for virtual and live streaming events only. And not um the other events, so that that would be the limitation. The post-graduation or promotion event, um, so families will want to gather after the um. The promotion or graduation event, the only thing I'm um concerned about that is just that. Any reduction in risk could be um by reducing the number of households that are going to gather as a reception. So safely celebrate in your household bubble is the highest or most effective way to celebrate. You can also um do celebrate by drive-through food and refreshment pickups. Um, and also encourage to um stay within the fifteen limit. Um, for private gatherings and also see if it, if weather permits to do outdoors. And maintaining distancing and wearing a mask, um, and only eat while outdoors. With enough distancing and also uh protect our elders and families is still very important. Also encourage um graduates and friends to celebrate responsibly. And if you have questions about these guidelines, call the nine-two-eight-eight-seven-one-seven. Zero-one-four, and then there are definitions about how and what is allowed through a drive-through. Um, that students can't go out out of their vehicle or a drive-in, they can go one student at a podium at a time. And so there are some definitions here, and I just want to um end here, but I just wanted to let everyone know that. Um, it's very important to follow the guidelines, as they are um a safety net to. Protecting ourselves, our families, and the healthcare workers that we have here on the Navajo Nation. Uh, we still hear of gatherings and clusters, so if we do this safely, if um as. Citizens of the Navajo Nations and encouraging our students to celebrate safely. We um should be able not to see an an uptick in numbers, so. We'll be carefully monitoring all the um month of May to ensure there aren't any um. Any incidents, but we just encourage everyone to stay safe, so. I'll end here, but I wanted to hand over time to Captain Brian Johnson, he's with the Navajo Area Office. I know that today was just a lot on the details of the graduation and commencement. They'll be posted on the Navajo Department of Health webpage, also their social media account. And you'll probably see on the press release of our daily numbers from O P V P and the Health Command Operations Center as well, so. Take it away, Captain Johnson.
Hey, uh, thank you, Dr. Jim, uh, very nice again to be here, thank you for the report today. Um, I always seem to learn something every time we uh jump on the Facebook session, so. Again, thank you and your team for uh continuing the partnership. Uh, as we move forward with our COVID nineteen uh situation and um improving situation. Um, again, this is Captain Brian Johnson, uh, serve as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the uh Navajo Area Indian Health Service. And uh for today, May sixth, two thousand twenty-one, um, certainly happy to report that we continue. Uh, to see our uh numbers, uh, I guess sustain or lessen, and um. It's it's a really nice thing to see, I think it's a result and a reflection. Again, of of all the hard work that uh the Navajo people are doing. Uh, in, as we work with our healthcare teams across the Navajo Nation. Um, I also wanted to take a moment, and I know that um today is. Uh, May sixth, with which actually starts off the uh. The appreciation for nurses, uh, National Nurses Week, as well as the Navajo Nation has recognized. Uh, the uh Nurse Appreciation Week, which is wonderful. As we know that um across the Navajo Nation, the nurses have done an outstanding job of um. Of providing healthcare throughout uh the COVID pan- uh COVID nineteen pandemic. And uh we're certainly excited to be where we are right now, but I think it's just even more meaningful at this point in time as as we continue. Uh, to provide healthcare services, that we give a huge shout out to those nurses. Uh, whether we're working in a in a health clinic, a health station, a hospital facility. Um, all of those levels are important, and um the nurses have played such a key role in the uh vaccines. That we continue to advocate that individuals get. So again, thank you nurses out there across Navajo land, uh, certainly, certainly do appreciate that. Um, we within the Indian uh Navajo Area Indian Health Service continue to uh work with the Navajo Nation uh Health Command Operations Center. Uh, continue to uh share information, uh, wanting to make sure that we're consistent in how we continue to uh move forward. Out, uh, the best thing that we can do as individuals is to um get the COVID nineteen vaccine. Um, you know, we started out many months ago, uh, earlier, uh, with uh the vaccine. And we started out with Pfizer and Moderna, moved on to Johnson and Johnson, and we still have those, all of those available to us as as we move forward. So um just want to, again, recommend if if folks out there uh haven't, or if they have a hesitancy. Uh, we're more than happy to talk uh with with individuals about uh the. Safety and efficacy of the uh vaccines. And uh certainly can just reach out to our facilities uh across the Navajo Nation if you have questions about that. Again, I also, um, as I've done in past reports, also continue to encourage. Uh, folks out there, again, we talked a little bit last time about, uh, this is allergy season for sure, and so sometimes. Uh, when you have allergies, it can, to an extent, mimic uh COVID nineteen. And um while you might think that it's only allergies you're dealing with, perhaps um you you might be in a position where you feel like you would like to get. Tested for COVID nineteen, just to be safe, uh, since you're around your family members, your friends and colleagues. And I want to uh assure everyone out there that uh COVID nineteen testing continues to be available and and we will continue. Uh, to provide that service, and it is highly recommended that um if if you have any question about that. Uh, please reach out if you need to talk with someone about symptoms that you're feeling, that you're not sure. Um, again, it's it's so critical just to talk to a healthcare professional. And um and make sure that um you're getting the the correct information uh about recommendations on uh how you should uh. Any actions that you should take. Uh, we continue, uh, and and again, with the with the COVID nineteen testing. I always mention that between the vaccines and vaccinations and the testing. These are, you know, the backbone of of making sure that we're really monitoring closely. Where we are with COVID nineteen, it's 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 still here, uh, we we know that. The number of exposures have have reduced, we know that the number of cases, of positive cases have gone down substantially over time. But what we also know is that we must keep up our testing. And uh this is so important for our epidemiologists, our public health professionals. That work in across the Navajo Nation in understanding where. Uh, COVID nineteen might be on the nation, if it's in one community or if it's in ten communities, uh, maybe at the chapter level. Um, it it's it's important to understand that so that we can sh- uh strategize. And make sure that we're uh working with those specific communities to isolate, to get the word out, to provide education. And to make sure that um that we're doing what we can to stop the transmission as early, early as possible. And as quickly as possible, uh, once we have a positive case. And that ties us back into our contact tracers, I know um, uh, Dale Yazi with the uh EpiCenter uh. Uh, consistently provides updated reports on the number of contact tracers that we continue to have available to us. And we do have uh uh plenty of contact tracers who support that effort, if we get a positive reading, a positive sample. Um, we utilize the contact tracers to reach out and make contact with individuals, as many of us know. And so their job is to reach out as quickly as possible, to identify potential exposures. And to uh stop the spread of that disease as soon as we can, so that continues to certainly be uh key for us. As 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 we move forward. Um, well, I know that we've gone over the vaccination numbers, and uh we continue while while we have um. Certainly a large uh uh number of of uh complete vaccinations that have happened across the Navajo Nation. We're still looking to increase that number, uh, you know, in order to make sure we stop the disease spread, we have to make sure that our communities. Are properly vaccinated, and 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 this actually helps uh develop what we refer to as herd immunity. And we still have a ways to go in order to really hit that community immunity or herd immunity. Uh, and so again, that's why I continue to uh suggest and recommend, it's why our other healthcare professionals. Uh, Dr. Jim and uh Dr. Christensen and uh Dr. Laura Hammett and others continue. and uh Dr. Laura Hammett and others continue to suggest, please, if if you uh if you haven't had your vaccination yet, please do that as that's the way that we'll protect all of our families and loved ones. Um, just wanna again make sure that folks know that we continue to um work with the Navajo Nation in terms of the variants, uh that we we know that the virus uh does mutate, and we've shared a lot of that information in previous sessions as well uh concerning variants of COVID nineteen. And uh by by making sure that we're doing the appropriate sampling, we're able to identify which of those variants are here on the Navajo Nation, and we continue to do that. And so I really appreciate the uh Navajo Nation EpiCenter, uh the Navajo Department of Health, working with the facility, uh federal healthcare facilities as well as the tribal healthcare facilities to better understand what variants are uh out there that's circulating. Um and for example, we know right now the state of Colorado uh still uh continues to have some very hot zones in terms of COVID nineteen spread and transmission. And um it's important for us to see that from a bird's eye view so that we understand are those cases and are those clusters and are those a higher number of cases moving closer to the Navajo uh nation, or are they moving further? And we know in recent conversations that uh we do have uh, you know, transmission that is happening, you know, in the say in the Farmington, New Mexico area and um also in uh crossing over into the Colorado and certain counties that we're watching closely. So um again, all of this ties together with the testing, uh the vaccinations, the uh monitoring, the contact tracers. And um of course, I always like to mention that uh again, we're we're blessed to be funded uh this year with uh additional funds. And uh we're using those funds to help with the community mitigation. We're 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 using those funds for education, making sure that we're doing uh using the the best uh uh services we can in the world of epidemiology and working with laboratories to to test and make sure we're watching those variants. So all of this comes together as a comprehensive approach to COVID nineteen prevention and uh how we're protecting our communities and then what, of course, you can do to protect uh your local community, your family members, uh your grandmas and grandpas and others. So um I just wanna say thank you again to the Navajo people. I've said it um many, many times. And the the response to COVID nineteen by the Navajo people has been simply outstanding and remarkable. And we just continue to encourage you to uh work with um the Navajo Department of Health. Um they they provide information to us, they share information, we we have discussions daily about the things that we can do, the things that we can control and the things that we should control. And so Dr. Jim earlier was talking about some of those guidelines. Please um take those seriously, uh take time to uh review. And if you have questions, there are phone numbers to make contact, certainly encourage you to do so. And um again, on a final note, I know that I've mentioned in uh previous uh sessions as well, this is a springtime, and so all of us around Navajo land, we know that hantavirus is something that does occur in nature. So while we're concerned about COVID nineteen, we also have to keep our eye on uh other things that can be of risk, and uh hantavirus is certainly one of those. If you're involving yourself in spring cleaning activities, whether it be in a shed or around your home and you find rodent droppings, please be utilizing uh hantavirus prevention techniques. And uh those are located at cdc.gov. You can look it up on uh at that location. The Navajo Department of Health also shares hantavirus prevention uh information, the proper use of bleach and cleaning materials, and also the use of uh respirators, uh face masks to protect yourself from uh breathing in uh those particles from rodent droppings.